Good evening and welcome to our July 17th meeting of the Cary Planning and Zoning Board. We have a very somewhat brief agenda tonight, so we're going to dive right into it. The first thing I'd like to do is adopt our agenda. Do we have a motion? Well, and I will note that we are a board of eight tonight. Mr. Nath is not with us. He may show up in just a moment. First thing I'd like to do is adopt our agenda. Do we have any changes, additions to the agenda? If not, could I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
We have a motion on the...
Second.
A second? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Next, we're going to approve our minutes from our April 15th minute meeting. And I believe we have an amendment. Mr. Shaw?
Yes. As written, it showed that Mr. Gascon was one of the dissents in the first vote on the Herndon Blunt property. That should have said Mr. Werner.
All right. Do we have any other changes? A motion do accept the minutes as modified?
So moved.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
We have a motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. And next, we go on to approve the minutes of our May 20th meeting. Any corrections? If not, a motion to approve?
Move that we approve the minutes from May 20th?
We have a motion, second?
Second.
We have a motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. And next, we go on to approve the minutes of our May 20th meeting. Any corrections? If not, a motion to approve?
Move that we approve the minutes from May 20th?
We have a motion, second?
Second.
We have a motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. And now, we're going to move on to our public hearings. A couple notes about our public hearing. We will begin each public hearing with a presentation from a member of our staff who will speak from the podium on my left, on your right. Following that, we will ask the applicant to present their position on the case for no more than 10 minutes. After the applicant's presentation, I will open the public hearing. We ask speakers that are interested in addressing us on a given case to fill out a comment card and then come down the stairs on my right, on your left. Give the clerk your applicant card, and you will be speaking at the leftmost podium here. You'll notice there's a little black box on the podium. And that, for the first four and a half minutes of your comments, will be green. We'll have a green light on it. At four and a half minutes, it'll turn yellow. And at five minutes, it'll turn red. When it turns red, that means that your time has expired. We ask you to conclude your comments to be fair to others. I ask that speakers be concise, avoid repetition. Where you've got a number of you that would like to make the same point, please anoint a spokesman. And please direct your comments to the full board rather than individuals. And I will note that we are now a full board. And please be aware of the fact that the board in general will not react to people speaking to us at the public hearing. That's not because we're sliding. It's just our policy not to do so. With that said, I'm going to open up our first public hearing, and that is our Stormwater Master Plan presented by Mr. Clinton.
Good evening and thank you, board members. This is a public hearing on the town's Stormwater Master Plan. This plan is important in defining a path forward for stormwater management here in the town. The plan is also a tool that can be used to define and explain our existing stormwater program, as well as investigate key and unique components of stormwater here in the town of Cary. The plan identifies a variety of opportunities, as well as tools, that can be used for future stormwater management. The overall planning process has taken approximately 15 months to complete. It began with an introductory public meeting to obtain feedback from citizens. Once the draft was complete, the plan was presented to council at a work session. We also presented to and received comments from the Environmental Advisory Board. The current draft was modified to incorporate comments and feedback from both the work session and the EAB, Environmental Advisory Board. A public hearing was held at Town Council at the May 9th meeting. There were no public comments and no council discussion at that public hearing. Schedule for the master plan includes a public hearing to be held here at this board meeting. Pending any comments, we will return to council for consideration on July 25th. Staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and forward the Stormwater Master Plan to council for final action. I'll be available after the public hearing to answer any questions you may have.
And in this case, we don't have an applicant to speak to us, so we'll step right into our public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak to us on our Stormwater Master Plan, please approach the podium now? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case up for discussion from the board. Questions?
Just one. I was just reading through the Green Growth Toolbox from the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, and it did have a section on stormwater management. I was just wondering if you had used any of that information or was familiar with that?
The consultant that we had prepare the plan, we worked with us, and they were tasked with going out across the country and across the state and the country to look for a variety of different stormwater resources. I can't speak specifically to them using that as a reference at all, but they did do a variety of different literature research to look at, you know, different, unique and different opportunities to manage stormwater.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I'll point out that we've all, I think, on this board have read it, and this plan has been fairly well-voted, so it's not as if we don't care. It's just that we've been through it fairly thoroughly, and also, I suggest, the lack of questions implies that you've done a pretty good job framing it.
Thank you.
In the absence of other questions, do we have a motion, please? Someone?
Yes. I will move that we recommend that we forward this to the council with a recommendation for approval.
We have a motion for approval from Mr. Shaw. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Miller. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion as stated say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And we're now going to move on to Case 12, REZ 20, the Herndon-Burt property presented by Ms. Bearman. Yes, it is Ms. Bearman.
Good evening. This is a public hearing on a request to rezonate about 16 acres. This property is owned by Leon and Shirley Herndon and Kathleen Burt. This is your third public hearing on this item. On April 15th, you considered this same rezoning case and recommended denial by a vote of six to three. The applicant did make some changes to the zoning conditions, which I'll discuss shortly, and those included reducing the maximum number of dwelling units. When this was taken before Town Council, it was sent back to this board for another public hearing and a recommendation so that you could take into consideration the changes to the zoning conditions that the applicant has proposed. This property is located at the northwest corner of NC 55 Highway and Turner Creek Road. It's currently zoned R-40 and Highway District in Wake County. The Highway District allows a variety of residential and institutional uses, as well as commercial uses, and the R-40 portion supports residential development at about one unit per acre. The proposed zoning district is residential multifamily conditional use. The proposed zoning conditions include a list of permitted uses that are listed here. There are several uses in the group living category, or up to 94 duplex or townhome units, or up to 68 patio homes, or several uses in the parks and open space category. The zoning conditions proposed when you last considered this item included 110 townhome or duplex units, so you can see that change shown in yellow. In addition, there are zoning conditions for additional setbacks and buffers along the northern property line, additional masonry on the buildings above what would otherwise be required, privacy fencing along the western property line, and a two-car garage for each unit, and this is also the other condition that has been added since you last saw this item. And finally, a commitment to do the road improvements that are recommended in the traffic study. This is an exhibit that illustrates the zoning condition for the enhanced buffer. This exhibit was also included as a condition, just as an illustration of the text included in a portion of the zoning conditions. Property is designated for medium-density residential use in the Cary Land Use Plan. This designation was put in place in 2004 with adoption of the Southwest Area Plan. According to Cary's GIS maps, there is a stream buffer impacting the northern boundary of the site, and that is taken into account in the zoning conditions. Also point out, this shows a recorded right-of-way reservation on the adjoining property to the west that could ultimately provide for a second connection to NC 55 for the Harmony subdivision to the west. Neighborhood concerns that have been expressed during the public hearing process include access concerns, traffic safety, pedestrian access to the Turner Creek Elementary School, compatibility with the existing neighborhood, and some impacts on drainage and erosion to the properties to the north. And this concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant is here as well. So I will call the applicant at this time for the applicant's comments.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Board, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. Appreciate the opportunity to be back. As Mary indicated, we are back because there have been two fairly, what we believe to be significant changes to the conditions that were proposed to you all for approval a couple of months ago. One relating to density, and as Mary reported, the density has been reduced from 110 units to 94 units. And just so you all are aware, when the case was presented to you two months ago, if you recall, there was some confusion in the slides. It was presented as 120 units in the slideshow. It was actually 110 at that time. And then, second, there's a condition now requiring a two-car garage for each of the dwelling units constructed on this site. We believe these are conditions that are, we hope, bringing us closer to what a density that folks believe is appropriate for this site. We believe it's reasonable and appropriate. And with respect to the condition related to the garage, we believe there's a significant value associated with requiring two-car garages. We believe there's an intrinsic value associated with the idea that you're going to be marketing these units to folks who have two cars. Oftentimes, that implies families. And there's also an extrinsic value associated with it, and that is the unit's just going to get bigger. By requiring two-car garages, you're increasing the footprint of the building. The unit becomes larger, and as a result, the overall density that you can put on the site goes down. So there was a fair amount of harmony, no pun intended in this instance, between reducing the overall development density and requiring the condition associated with the two-car garage. I briefly want to touch on, and I'll keep my comments as brief as possible, but I want to touch on where we started with this case, and when I say "we," where the applicant started roughly 10 months ago, and where we are today. Because I think that the changes in the conditions will show an applicant who is doing everything within its power to accommodate the interests of the very interested community in this case, as well as the Planning and Zoning Board when we were last here. We certainly heard you all out and clear that density was an issue, and we've heard from the neighbors a variety of issues that have been raised. When this case was first filed, there were two zoning conditions. Condition number one and condition number four. And condition number four has been modified, as we talked about, with respect to permitted use, as well as density. But condition number one existed at the time of filing, and that was providing a 100-foot building and parking setback from the northern boundary line. And, Mary, is there a way to go to an aerial for a moment?
The aerial?
Yeah, the aerial would be great. And while she's bringing that up. So those were the only two conditions that existed with respect to the zoning at the time it was submitted last fall. We're hopeful to get out before next fall. A number of issues have been raised during this process. You all heard from a lot of interested citizens associated with respect to this proposal two months ago, and I suspect you're going to hear from a lot of those same folks tonight. And we understand their concerns. As we've told them, if I were in their shoes, I would be vigilant as well. I would want to make sure that whatever happened down the street from me, whatever happened next door to me, would be something that wouldn't have an adverse impact on my property value, that wouldn't be loud, it wouldn't come with an unneed or unwanted impact on the area. One of the issues that was raised early in the process was with respect to buffering this use from adjacent uses. As a result, conditions two and conditions three have been added to this proposal. And if you want to go to the... Thank you. Condition number two and number three each have a reference to an exhibit, and that's the exhibit that you see on the screen before you. There is an 80-foot Type A buffer essentially east of the Town of Cary 100-foot stream buffer, and I'll highlight that briefly. So you have the 100-foot Town of Cary buffer, which spans here. You have an 80-foot buffer in this area, as well as this area here. With respect to this portion of the property here, you have an additional 20 feet that is being replanted with eight-foot-tall cryptomaria. Or, excuse me, six feet tall, yeah, eight-feet-tall cryptomaria. So there's a 20-foot revegetated buffer and an 80-foot Type A buffer here, and then there's a 100-foot undisturbed buffer on this side of the creek. Again, significant changes made to the overall plan with respect to development based on concerns that were raised early in the process with respect to buffering. There was also, there have been issues raised with respect to ensuring quality of the units that are being built on the site. The applicant has every intention of building a high-quality townhouse development on the site. The conditions associated with quality in conditions five and eight, we believe, adequately address those concerns. Condition five requires that building units consist of 50% masonry on the front and 35% masonry on the sides and the back. Again, that's a significant departure from what is otherwise required by the code and is an effort to give folks insurance that regardless of whether it's the current applicant or some future applicant, that development of this property will happen in a manner that's in a high-quality fashion. Again, condition number eight with respect to requiring a two-car garage. That's something we believe speaks to value. It speaks to quality. It says, "We're building larger units." This isn't going to be throw as many small townhomes, tall, small townhomes on the site as you possibly can and then get out of town. We believe these are going to be high-quality, and we believe those two conditions address the issues that we've heard with respect to quality. There was an issue raised with respect to privacy and noise. If you look at condition, I believe it's condition two, there's reference to a six-foot-high wooden fence. That fence is going to go in between the 80-foot buffer and the 20-foot revegetated buffer, and it's going to span the northern boundary of the property from the Town of Cary 100-foot buffer all the way out to Highway 55. A six-foot-high privacy fence. Along the western boundary of the site, there's a privacy fence that's required via condition six that's going to be installed behind any proposed dwelling unit. So any units that are proposed on the western side of the site will have a privacy fence constructed and installed behind them. It will be six feet tall. Again, to address concerns that the applicant heard with respect to privacy, as well as noise. We believe that the fence along those western and northern boundaries adequately addresses any potential noise that could come from a development like this. My experience is that noise associated with townhomes is actually less than single-family if you're talking about buffering from, you know, Highway like 55. There was also issues raised with respect to traffic, and those were raised early in the process. And at the time of filing, a traffic analysis report, or TAR, was not required of the applicant, and they didn't perform one prior to filing. In direct response to a number of neighbors expressing concerns associated with traffic, the developer sucked it up, incurred the expense associated with the traffic analysis, and that has been returned. And the developer has incorporated all of the recommended improvements associated with that TAR into their conditions, and that's condition number seven. Finally, I want to touch on two other issues, and that's with respect to buffers and safety. I think one of the things that's being lost, and Mary, I don't know if there's a way to go back to the aerial. I think one of the things that's being lost in the conversation associated with this case is on the buffering front, and that is from the proposed development to its western boundary. This is the Harmony subdivision here, and this is the proposed site. There is a large portion, a large piece of property that is not included in this application that is also owned by the seller associated with this particular proposal. There currently sits a single-family home on the back of the site and a single-family home up against Turner Creek Road. Now, I'm sure a creative land planner could come in and figure out a way to squeeze some lots out of a potential redevelopment of this site, but for all practical purposes, and you'll hear later from the Herdons who have no desire to go anywhere, but for all practical purposes, the Herdons are willingly painting themselves into a corner by selling this piece of property for a proposed development and not including their site in the proposal. And again, that's something they're willing to do because they have no intention of going anywhere. And I raise that point because it creates a buffer. It creates a buffer between what is going to be proposed on this site or developed on this site and the folks who live in Harmony. And that's a significant property frontage. We've done some estimations. You're talking about, you know, roughly 300 feet between, you know, the back of the homes at Harmony and the proposed dwellings associated with our site. The last issue I want to touch on, and then I'll stop talking for the benefit of everybody involved, relates to safety. One of the issues that was raised with the neighbors was the safety of children who are currently walking from Harmony to Turner Creek. Now, this is not part of your zoning case. It's not included within the conditions, but we have had advanced conversations with Wake County Public Schools about constructing a sidewalk that would essentially take children who are currently using this sidewalk to walk to Turner Creek and take them down the western edge of Turner Creek Elementary and access the site from here. Currently, they have to cross this drive aisle, which I've got school-aged children as well. I would not want my children crossing a drive aisle that is being used for folks who are trying to get in and out of carpool lines. We've all been in those lines, and people try to get in and out as quickly as they can.
Excuse me. I noticed the timer's gone off. Did we set that for five or 10 minutes?
Yeah.
We did? Okay. I'm afraid I have to cut you off, then.
That's fine. In summary, we appreciate you all's consideration and hope for your support.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And we're going to now move on to the public hearing. Anyone that would like to address on this, also in this case, please come down the stairway and hopefully have your comment card to give to our clerk. I ask you to begin by giving us your name and your address. It's easier if we know who we're talking to.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Joshua Bruckstein. I'm a member resident of Harmony Subdivision 214 Euphoria Circle. Listening to the comments just before, I think our concerns really aren't on a buffer between the Herndon property and ours. It really centers around the traffic and the impact to us, as well as others. Looking at the traffic report, the TAR report, in some detail, it really does show that there is no, as the TAR report reads, "After investigating potential mitigation, it was determined that no reasonable geometric improvements," meaning movements of cars through this intersection that they're proposing, "would be desirable." So the fact that they're saying that they're willing to meet the recommendations of the TAR is meaningless because the TAR does have no provisions for increasing this to Town of Cary standards. This is a project that is being driven by the developer, trying to maximize profit at the expense of the Town of Cary standards. They've only reduced about 15% of the density that was originally proposed. That's not going to make much of a difference in the traffic issues that sent this back to review in the first place. I, for one, would welcome a development that was in line with the three and a half dwelling units per acre. That would be roughly the same as the existing properties that adjoin the Herndon property in question. And again, going back to traffic, the access point that they are proposing is directly impinging on those buses, again, trying to turn at Turner Creek Elementary. It is going to create a pinch point. It is going to create more stress for drivers there. And yes, as the, you know, parents want to get in and out of Turner Creek Elementary, it's going to be a point of conflict, and that is never good. It doesn't set a good example for other developments in Town of Cary. For those reasons, I ask the zoning board to decline the application of D.R. Horton and the property owner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Joel Green. I'm the president of Harmony homeowners association. Here tonight to represent the content and interests of 300 Cary families. I tend to be brief, as you've all been through this case before. As you can see, we've got a number of our homeowners that'll go at various points, but I'm going to try to keep short to the things we need to deal with tonight. As we understand it, the concern tonight is whether the difference between 108 and 94 townhomes is significant enough to reconsider the decision that you folks made in April. We believe that it is not. In fact, the TIA numbers to be considered have not changed at all because the traffic numbers, which is a huge part of this issue, were based on the numbers coming out of the 68 patio homes. That's the number that all the traffic information is based on, not the townhome number. So in effect, all the traffic information we have has not changed since April. Although I could not personally make the April hearing, I did review it carefully on the web. I was concerned about some of the comments that the board made regarding the applicant's zoning conditions that were added. The fact is, only a couple of these are really in response to anything that the neighbors have brought up. The masonry component and now the two-car garage component, we do appreciate, and we do feel like those are significant to increasing the value of these properties. But the issues of buffers that the applicant focused on a little while ago don't really address any of the concerns we had. The privacy offenses, as he pointed out, are going to be backed up to the Herdons' property. We're not real sure what that accomplishes. Also, last time, there were only a few of the homeowners' concerns placed on the staff report, and I was very happy to see that improve tonight. So thank you, Ms. Bearman. Like I said, I wanted to keep it brief. That's pretty much the difference, is whether there's any significant change. We're very happy with the decision you folks made in April, and we hope to see that stay the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Antonio Rutolo. I'm the vice president of the...
Here tonight to represent the content and interests of 300 Cary families. I tend to be brief, as you've all been through this, this case before. As you can see, we've got a number of our homeowners that'll go at various points, but I'm going to try to keep short to things we need to deal with tonight. As we understand it, the concern tonight is whether the difference between 108 and 94 townhomes is significant enough to reconsider the decision that you folks made in April. We believe that it is not. In fact, the TIA numbers to be considered have not changed at all because the traffic numbers, which is a huge part of this issue, were based on the numbers coming out of the 68 patio homes. That's the number that, that all the traffic information is based on, not the townhome number. So, in effect, all the traffic information we have has not changed since April. Although I could not personally make the April hearing, I did review it carefully on the web. I was concerned about some of the comments that the board made regarding the applicant's zoning conditions that were added. The fact is, only a couple of these are really in response to any, anything that the neighbors have brought up. The masonry component and now the, the two-car garage component, we do appreciate, and we do feel like those are significant to increasing the value of these properties. But the, the issues of buffers that, that the applicant focused on a little while ago don't really address any of the concerns we had. The privacy offenses, as he pointed out, are going to be backed up to the Herndon's property. We're not real sure what that accomplishes. Also, last, last time, there were only a few of the homeowners' concerns placed on the staff report. I was very happy to see that improve tonight. So, thank you, Ms. Bierman. Like I said, I wanted to keep it brief. That's, that's pretty much the difference, is whether there's any significant change. We're very happy with the decision you folks made in April, and, and we hope to see that stay the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Antonio Rutolo. I'm the vice president of the Harmony HOA Board. I, first and foremost, thank you for your, your time once again. Our contention has been and remains rooted in three fundamental factors: density, safety, and parity. The previous and modified D.R. Horton townhome development plans fail on all three counts. I want to take this time to debunk items which D.R. Horton considers as concessions to area communities and residents. Number one, a reduction of the proposed original 120 townhomes to 110, and post-D.R. Horton's P&amp;Z denial, a reduction to 94 just a few weeks ago. The maximum density gives you their original 120 townhome figure. Please, look at the vicinity map. Where can you fit 120 townhomes? D.R. Horton intentionally aimed for the maximum so any reduction looks like a compromise, which is exactly what they're doing. This is simply a developer tactic and not a faithfully brokered compromise. I urge you to look at the map while considering the land development ordinance. How does 110, or even 100, or even 90 fit on any level? Number two, permitted land uses shall be limited to the following: group home, life care community, nursing home, duplex dwelling, patio dwelling, townhomes, public park, private or public recreation center, and/or resource conservation facility. D.R. Horton is not and will not build a group home, or a life care community, or a nursing home, or a public park, or a public or private recreation center, or a resource, a resource conservation facility. They compromise on absolutely nothing here. Stop signs at intersections. When existing communities, roads, traffic flow, pedestrian traffic, and elementary school are included, the plan fails to meet acceptable traffic flow and safety parameters based upon the traffic impact analysis. This is a quantifiable fact. Residents already anticipated that. However, whether it fails or not, which holistically it does, does anyone here really think stop signs in a community are a compromise? I question the reasoning of an organization that construes reasonable requirements as grand compromises, as D.R. Horton is doing in this case. Number four, a 100-foot building and parking setback from the northern property line, basically arcing west and slightly northeast along the north property line. It consists of an 80-foot-wide buffer of existing woodland and a 20-foot-wide portion of tall shrubs. D.R. Horton is required to incorporate a setback. The additional 20 feet of landscape actually benefits their potential residents and the proposed development more than anyone else, as well as the mandated stream buffer. So, there really is no concession here. A six-foot-high wooden fence to be incorporated between the Herndon-Burt property with a small section behind the Chesney-Glen community. This may provide some limited benefit for the Bertsons and the Herdons, as well as a few backyards in Chesney-Glen, but primarily it's an inexpensive way to satisfy a small group of vested landowners. In closing, I again stress how D.R. Horton's proposed townhome development fundamentally fails the LDO criteria, fails the traffic impact study, fails the Town of Cary, fails Turner Creek Elementary School students, staff, and parents, as well as area residents, by not adequately addressing density, safety, and parity. I will also end in closing that talk about sidewalks is just talk about sidewalks as it relates to Turner Creek Elementary at this point. Thank you again, and we hope you take our comments into consideration.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. My name is Prasad Varahabhatla, and I'm actually here to represent one of my neighbors who couldn't make it today. You will have that paper in front of you, but there are two themes that he talked about in this document, and those two themes, again, actually, I think Antonio also talked about it just now. It's about density and parity. Reduction of 100, I mean, 100, from 110 to 94 is not necessarily a big increase. It's still about six cubic, I mean, six dwelling units per acre, and while all the surrounding properties are about three. So, in from a parity perspective, it definitely does not meet up. And the second thing is about the traffic, especially when we look at the amount of traffic that goes through to Turner Creek School right now, and with the inclusion of these 100 homes or 90 homes, it's going to compound the issues and create very unsafe conditions for the residents of Harmony and students of Turner Creek School. So, just to read the last lines of my neighbor here, "We strongly oppose this proposal and request the planning and zoning committee to consider changing the zoning to single-family homes at the Herndon-Burt property, and we hope you sincerely think through the future adverse effects of the area before you approve the plan. We request the denial of this plan completely, and we just hope that you can uphold the decision you made last minute." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Chairman of the Board and Board members, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak here today. I have the same concerns as...
Would you give us your name first?
I'm sorry. My name is Sanjay Bhasmey, and I am at 302 Alliance. I live right here in this, on this corner lot over here. I would like to, I have the same concerns as the rest of my friends here, but I would like to take this opportunity to rebut the point that was made by the applicant today, and that point is about this, this site here that they're saying is now a buffer, an additional buffer that had been, and that, that point had been lost in the past. When we purchased this home two and a half years ago, the quality of life in this subdivision was really important to us, and so for us, that entire property was a buffer from Highway 55. So, now we are being asked to reduce that buffer to less than a fourth of the original size. The second point I want to make is, at that point, at that time, again, we did not have any idea that this property would get sold and developed. So, with the same theme in mind, who, who is to say, two and a half years from now, that the Herdons are not going to sell off that final piece of land that they are on, and that part would also get developed? That's entirely plausible, and then that will open up the Rappo Drive extension coming into our Harmony subdivision. What that's, what that's going to do is, for, if you look at the traffic, 110 townhomes, that's a third more of the traffic compared to what it is today. That's a significant increase, and that traffic exiting out on Turner Creek towards the front is not going to be sufficient. So, a lot of traffic is going to try to exit around the back, around Rappo Drive, to try to circle around and exit off the main entrance. So, that's going to significantly increase traffic on, on the inside. You have children walking along the sidewalk on that side of the street, going to school in the mornings and coming back from school in the afternoon. So, we also have safety concerns with regards to traffic trying to use the back route just because the front is going to be too congested to make it easy to exit onto 55. So, I just wanted to bring those points, those specific points out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and the Board, thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Vijay Garcha. We live in 104 Alliance Circle, which is the, which is backing up to the Herndon-Burt property. It's, it's a second home on Alliance Circle. And I represent myself and one of my good friends and neighbors, Parag Diggah here. We moved here about a couple of years ago, and one of the, one of the major things we were looking at when we looked at all the towns around, lived in many, many different states in the country, and I go back to all my old friends, and I told them, I said, you know, there's something special about Town of Cary. The way they do their planning and zoning is exceptional, and we were looking at this property and many others in many of the neighboring towns. Something which uniquely stood out to us was the, the way you guys did your developments. It was, they were brick fronts, or when you had one-third of an acre of single-family homes, there were only that, only those kind of properties around there. And that was one of the reasons why we chose to buy the place that we bought, which was 104 Alliance Circle. That seems to be changing here. We are, we're hoping that, that doesn't happen. That said, some of the, some of the concerns that, you know, we share, it's probably redundant. One of, one of them is obviously traffic. One of the, the major ones is around the potential decreasing property values, and, you know, when, when you live in a, you know, we, we used to live in apartments and townhomes. We expected what we would, when we bought into those places, we, we had an expectation, and that expectation was lived to its fullest. Now, where we are in our stage in life, we are, there is a minimum expectation of the town that we live in, and especially from, from you guys in terms of making the right decisions. So, we're hoping that you'll, you'll listen to our concerns. The other concerns that Parag had, and I'll, I'll rate them to you, are around possible abuse and unauthorized user of our subdivisions amenities such as swimming pools, tennis courts, and other common areas. In our town, as, as we understand, we don't have the ability to gate our own community, and that opens our community up to any kind of trespassing. On a weekly basis, we, we count the number of trespassers in our community to be any, anything, anywhere between half a dozen to a dozen. We catch them, and we say, "What are you doing here?" They say, "Oh, there was no gate on there." So, I said, "Okay, we, we can't really put a gate on there. We can probably have some security mechanisms to deter you, but there's no way to do that." So, this is probably going to increase the, those, those number of attempts from a trespassing perspective, as well as the security threats which are increasing. Just last week, we had about more than a dozen vandalism and car theft, not car theft, but car break-ins, just in our community. That was about, there was about 30 in our community, in our extended community and the communities around. Our perception is that, that's not going to help when we have relative, relatively speaking, lower caste housing right next to these homes, which are anywhere between third of an acre, $400,000 to $600,000 in value. There's a, there's a huge disparity there. Other couple of concerns are, a lot of stress on the public utilities, which is already restricted due to scarcity and, and the draft situation. So, thank you for letting us speak to you guys. I'm dressed casual, but that was more because I had to be at a, one of my, one of my daughters' social at, at her workplace, at her, at her school, but we take this very seriously. I hope you, you guys take it seriously as well. Thank you for your time.
We wish we could dress casually as well.
I was looking at you guys.
Hi. My name is Ed Casper. I'm a resident of Harmony, 516 Alliance Circle, about 300 feet, maybe 400 feet from the subject property. I'd like to draw your attention to the access points, which I've circled on the pages here as one, two, and three. What's important about, for me, for the access point is they're basically below standard. The standard, the way I read it, was LOS E.D., and these are at E. The TAR report says that's okay. It's acceptable because it only affects the people that are driving in and out of the development. But if you look at Access Point Two, which is a full access on the North Carolina 55, that's really a dangerous spot. The five-year average, according to the staff report, there's 10 bodily injuries per month along this stretch of road. There's been two deaths, one just north and one just south of this area. So, when you have a long line of cars waiting to get out, it's a danger to other people. One lady was killed, and another woman and her daughter in the car were not injured. But again, the five-year average, 10 bodily injuries per month along North Carolina 55, and you want to add an access, full access point, it's at LOS E. Access Point Three, which is a, which is the three on the circle, that's a reduction from the existing LOS B. That's the only access point in and out of Harmony. Harmony had the limit of 300 homes because of the access. But not only does that limit Harmony, it's also for Turner Creek School. And that's the only access point for Turner Creek School, and there is 897 students, parents that drop off back and forth, and about 10 school buses and private buses that have to access that. The one that has the most concern to me is Access Point One, which, again, that's below standard. Not only does this point add further congestion, this proposal will create a dangerous four-way intersection. The TAR reports, quote, "While this is not desirable, that no reasonable geometric improvements could be made, and besides, only affects vehicles exiting the site." That's from page ES46. The report fails to acknowledge that an estimated 40 children will be crossing through that intersection every day, rain, snow, plain as usual, and they'll probably have to have a crossing guard there. And then, my question is, who's going to pay for that crossing guard? And how will that impact that access point at Turner Creek? That was not included in the, in the TAR report. Horton has said that they're going to build a sidewalk for Turner Creek Harmony to get into Turner Creek School. I think that's a really a good idea. He also mentioned that that's a dangerous intersection, but he'll be asking the people that buy the homes there to cross Turner Creek Road to get to the school. And by the estimate, they can only estimate how many students there will be. There'll be about 40 students. They will have to cross that street. How are they going to get across? Through the same way that, you know, Turner Creek or Harmony goes through? So, we disagree with TAR's conclusion that no reasonable improvements could be made. We believe it'd be reasonable to reduce the density, the density, to the comparable density of the surrounding neighborhood. The three surrounding neighborhoods are all a density of about an average of 3.5, and the developer wants to build six. If the developer went to 3.5 or four, that would reduce the traffic on all three access points. That would make a community that would fit within the neighborhood, and it would be relatively safer for everyone, and it would really do all the concerns. So, based upon the information at these public hearings and the TAR report, and the criteria for Section 3.4, the land ordinance, which emphasizes environmental protection, lower density, and preservation of rural land areas, and also according to Southwest Plan, something else that I noticed on, I didn't check this with the staff, but on your map where it says site, the residential areas where the Hertons and Bertsons have their residential home, according to Southwest Plan 6B, multiple dwelling unit is supposed to have a 100-foot access point. They talked about having a 100-foot access to the north, but they haven't included any 100-foot access point to the west.
I'm sorry, your, your time has expired. I need to ask you to...
Okay. So, we hope you don't approve it. Thank you.
Respect to Chairperson and Planning and Zoning Board members. My name is Sri Palitla. I'm a resident of Harmony. I live at 416 Chime Court. I'd like to express my opposition to the proposed rezoning application. A lot of the people who spoke before me talked about public safety, and I'd like to expand on that, just to give you the notion that safety is not an abstract notion. It's not a figment of our imagination. It's real. And we'll go through some exhibits that I have that discuss the safety concerns that the school has. I have two children who attend Turner Creek Elementary School, and I'm coming here as a parent because I have serious concerns about the proposal. All in all, I think, I would say there are approximately 100 kids, you know, who walk or bike to TCAS every day, and depending on where the kids come from, they cross several roads, they cross Enable Loop, they cross Alliance Circle, they cross Turner Creek Road. And they also cross the intersection of Turner Creek Road and the carpool lanes entering the school. Safety of the walkers is a big concern to parents as well as the school. At this point, I'd like you to turn to the exhibits. I do not have time to go through all of the exhibits, but I merely want to illustrate that safety is, is not an abstract notion. It's not something in our mind. It's real. All right? So, look at Exhibit One. Look at the circle at the bottom of Exhibit One, and the first line says, "Did you know that as many as 300 cars pull into the entrance of the school each morning?" 300 cars pull into this, into the school every morning. There's instructions here for the drivers, asking them to slow down, asking them to stop when they see children. There have been instances where drivers just don't care. They, they don't yield to the pedestrians. They just go past the crossing guard, go past the kids in an effort to beat the rush. They just go past the crossing guard, go past the kids in an effort to beat the rush. School has a big concern with this. Exhibit two, again, the circle at the bottom. Just read the first line, it just says, “Morning carpool is longer this year,” and this is 2012 academic year. Exhibit three is an old newsletter, and these newsletters come out every week, and almost every other newsletter, there's an issue, there's an article about safety. It talks about some safety issues for walkers, and that's why, that's what motivates me to come out here. Just a caveat, I'm not representing the school. I'm here as a parent. Okay? The school didn't ask me to come and speak to you. I'm here as a parent. So one last exhibit, exhibit four, is just a picture showing some walkers walking to school. And if you look to the right of the photograph, you can see several walkers. It's a rainy day, so you don't see that many walkers. A lot of them, a lot of the kids went by carpool, and you can see some cars, their taillights are on, there are some cars entering the community. And, you know, this is a concern that we have. There's a concern among homeowners, just not myself, that the townhomes will aggravate the safety issues. Ed Casper, who spoke before me, talked about some numbers, about forty more kids entering Turner Creek, and more than likely, they will cross Turner Creek Elementary, they will cross the Turner Creek Road to enter the school. Okay? And that's a safety concern. You will have increased traffic in the carpool lanes. And exhibit two, if you see, school has a concern with the carpool lanes getting longer. So I just wanna say that I have a beef with the traffic impact study. Rush hour, according to the traffic impact study, is evening rush hour is 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. School gets off at 3:45. That's when the rush is. So the traffic impact study, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., does not consider the impact of the school, the parents coming to pick up the kids. All right? I've been asked to sum up, I just have thirty seconds. So all I want to say is that we oppose the townhomes. I know the developer has been in discussions. This is the first time hearing with the Wake County Public School System. I appreciate that, but I think these are empty promises. All right? These are just simple concessions. I'd like to see something concrete. Safety of our kids trumps everything. We cannot forgive ourselves. I cannot forgive myself if I did not do everything to ensure the kids' safety. So I ask that you deny the rezoning application.
All right, I need to ask you to conclude.
In time. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Rahul Nadkarni, and I live at 404 Alliance Circle, which is at the back of the community. I wanted to talk more about the safety concerns. I have two children, young children. One goes to Turner Creek today, and another one that'll go next year. And I'm really concerned about the impact that the new development will have on the safety of our children and the quality of education that they get from Turner Creek Elementary. It is estimated that the new development would add somewhere around forty new children to the Turner Creek Elementary School, and that's expected to add three to four school buses, about a thirty percent increase. Today, the school bus drivers complain about parking, and that should be restricted to one side of the street. And we expect with rainy conditions and on cold days, things to get worse. Our request for crosswalks for our children was turned down citing we did not meet the standards. With the new development and the new access point, that'll create a four-way intersection, and that will necessitate a crossing guard, and that can further impact delay, further impact the traffic and delay. And that was not considered in the traffic report. With the additional children in Turner Creek, it means potentially new classrooms, new teachers, logistics. And just a few months ago, the school lost its school of distinction standing and struggling to regain that lost footing. Currently, about eighteen percent, eighteen point seven percent of the TCE children are in temporary classrooms, and with the additional children from the new development, from the proposed development, that would go up to about twenty-four percent. Again, since with Turner Creek losing its school of excellence footing, adding new children to temporary classrooms would just make it worse. So to sum it up, because of the safety of our children and the quality of education from Turner Creek, I respectfully urge you to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jin Chunfeng, and I am a resident of Harmony. And first, I want to appreciate the Res zoning Committee of Cary Town to organize this public hearing and give me this opportunity to express my concerns about the rezoning issue due to the townhouse project proposal by the builder. As we know, the original townhouse project proposal by the builder had been denied on April 15, 2013 because the construction was to create a safety, traffic, and density property devalue problems to existing nearby communities. There is no doubt about the negative consequence to the previous proposed project, as many residents already addressed them in previous public hearing. So this new proposal, proposal still planning to build a townhouse community on the zone with reduced, reduction in numbers of townhouses from one hundred and ten to ninety-four. It's like, for me, it's like only give a pain relief medicine to a very sick patient who actually really need surgery. The pain relief medicine will never be able to cure the patient. That's the same way, the new proposal, which reduces some number of the townhouses, only changes the level of the problem seriousness. All of the density, traffic, safety, and property devalue problem actually still there. Therefore, I do believe the new proposal is a change, however, it's not a solution. So I do suggest that the builder redesign and plan the proposal and cooperate with surrounding communities to work out a safety and a beautiful community together in Cary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Board Members. My name is Shirley Herndon. My husband and I live at 6828 Turner Creek Road, and we thank you for listening to us this evening. Over fifty years ago, as a college student, I traveled Highway 55 from Blumerton to Durham, and I thought that this is the most beautiful land in all of North Carolina. And I was very blessed to have married into the family that owned this land. The family has been excellent stewards. They have allowed the land to be used to build Turner Creek Elementary School. They have allowed the land to be used to build Bright Beginnings Child Development Center. These two institutions have had an impact on the total community. They have worked with so many young children and were given solid foundations on which they could build successful futures. The institutions provided jobs for many people in the Cary community. The institutions provided resources, economic resources for the town of Cary and beyond. Now, the Herndon family sees the need for housing in this area and has found a developer who appreciates and values the beautiful land as much as the Herndon's. And this has been shown by the way they have listened to our neighbors and have made changes based on the many conversations that they have had with the neighbors. They have listened to you, the town of Cary, and have met and exceeded all of the requirements that you have asked of the developer. They have met with the Department of Transportation and have made all the changes that the Department of Transportation has requested. So now I'm a little confused. I'm confused why this project has experienced so much difficulty in getting an acceptable By your own land use plan that was adopted in 1996 and amended in 2006, it was designated that townhomes be placed on this land, among other things. It was also found that with conversation from our last Planning and Zoning meeting, that we should not mix townhomes with single-family homes. But recently reviewing the North Carolina Code of Residential Dwellings, townhomes can also be considered as single-family homes. And I'm also concerned is because less than three miles from where this property is, the town of Cary has approved a mixed-use townhome and single-family homes abutting each other. I'm concerned and don't know what the problems are. The townhome community in question this evening, as has been said, has adequate buffers. It also has our homes that we have lived in, and of course, the property has been in the family for over a hundred years. And between the proposed townhome community, not only is that real buffer, but our homes are there on a four-and-a-half acre land. So this new community does not touch Harmony subdivision. The discussion also at the last Planning and Zoning meeting mentioned that the homes were, most of the homes, I got the impression, were four to five hundred thousand dollar homes. In reality...
Sorry, I hate to do this to you, but the red light has gotten you.
Oh, gracious. Thank you.
I need to be fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to address us?
Yes.
No problem. Hi, my name is Joel Fleischman. I live at 102 Alliance Circle, which is exactly right in back of where the property is proposed. The building is proposed. I'm representing about six of my neighbors that are, fortunately for them, most of them are on vacation. Anyway, I moved to Cary from South Florida, and you could tell by my accent, I was from New York before that, born in Brooklyn, New York. The reason that I moved here to Cary is because I was constantly told of the integrity of the people here, of the community, and why I picked Cary is because of the integrity these people, the board members, et cetera, cared about the way the communities looked. They cared about how things were laid out. They cared, they cared, they cared. And there's a reason why it was zoned, even the area that I live in, it was zoned for medium or not low density, to keep the land a certain way, the safety factors. I mean, you heard from, you know, a dozen people before me, so I'm not gonna belabor the point tremendously, having to do with safety features, even though I can say that the school, I have called the police a few times because kids were almost hit crossing the street, and a number of times I had to go out and actually police the traffic myself because kids were almost hit. I couldn't picture another X amount of children going to the school, which is also being downgraded fast for various reasons. But one thing that has to be true, if you add a lot more students to the school, the troubles that they have keeping their ratings up is certainly not going to help it at all. The traffic, we've seen quite a few accidents and near accidents during school hours, which is not a wonderful thing to have to see. And obviously, if you add X amount more cars, it's gonna become that much more a problem. Anyway, to conclude, I'm not gonna, this happens to be a dollar and cents thing. A dollar and cents thing, meaning that in this economy, it's very easy to sell townhomes and make a lot bigger profit on it. Just, I'm not against development of land, and probably neither are any of the other people that are here. That's why it was zoned for a certain type of building, and I have nothing against that. And I don't think that most of the other people that are in Harmony have anything against that either. Anyway, I care about the neighborhood, I care about how things look, and one of the reasons I did spend the money to move here is because I expected a certain type of integrity and keeping the neighborhoods, the parks, and all the other things with a certain reason that I moved here. In New York or South Florida, this meeting wouldn't have even taken place because it would have been sold to the highest bidder. Real simple. They would have, on any land for another few thousand dollars, they would have put a penitentiary, three waste plans, they couldn't care less. But I thought more of this community and the reason why it was zoned a certain way. And the reason it's zoned a certain way is, of course, you know better. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Herndon Burt, recently Lee. I reside at 6824 Turner Creek Road, across from Turner Creek Elementary School, and I am the sister of Leon Herndon and share ownership with the property located at northwest corner of Highway 55 and Turner Creek Road where Leon and Shirley reside. There is a book by Robert Fulgrim titled, “All I Really Need to Know I Learned in Kindergarten.” In this book, Fulgrim shares some uncommon thoughts on common things that he learned in kindergarten that applies to his life as an adult. Some of these things were, share everything, play fair, don't hit people, put things back where you found them, clean up your own mess, don't take things that aren't yours. Say you are... you're sorry when you hurt somebody, to name a few of the things that are in that book. I mention this because, in this book, there are so many of the values that my parents taught me and my siblings. We were taught to love and to respect our God, our family, and our community. These are practices that we live by and have passed down to our children and our grandchildren. I remember this community that we mentioned tonight, before, there was a Highway 55. There was a dirt road where Louis Drive and Turner Creek is now, and that dirt road stretched from Green Level Road to Old Apex Road, where one traveled to connect with even more dirt roads that will take you to farther communities and cities, which is now in the Research Triangle area. When I stand on my front porch and look across at Turner Creek Elementary School, I'm reminded of a little wooden frame house that stood in that very spot years ago. It was the house where my mother, my sister, and my brother and I were born. I remember the farmland that once surrounded our house there, as well as the farmland where all of the housing development and shopping centers are now. I love to think of how symbolic Turner Creek Elementary School and Bright Beginnings Child Development Center are, considering that back in the early 1900s, there was another educational institution in this community that laid the foundation for a great community, a school named Scott Grove Elementary School, named after my deceased grandfather. This school was where my mother and her siblings attended. As you can see, this land has been in our family for over a century. We have loved, respected, enhanced the growth, and enhanced the growth of this community. It is out of our love and respect for our land that we sold a part of our inheritance to Wake County Public School to share with the town of Cary and our surrounding neighbors, the Turner Creek Elementary School. Our decisions with this land has always reflected our desires to improve the best for our neighbors. Just as the elementary school has provided education to children in surrounding communities, we look forward to further enhancing this community while, of course, remaining in complete legal compliance with the new project. Even though we have exceeded the town of Cary requirements for rezoning, over the past several months, we have placed legalities aside to specifically listen to the voices of the surrounding communities. I myself have attended numerous of these meetings, listening too, and proven contributions to the plan. We are very respectful and protective of this community, realizing that change is constant. We have welcomed the growth and the diversity of choices of houses around us. We feel that the option of townhomes will add to our community.
I'm sorry, I need to stop you right there.
So please vote yes.
Your time has run out. Thank you very much for speaking to us. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for your time. My name is Lisa Levitt. I live at 105 St.
Sir, can you say that again, please?
My name is Lisa Levitt. I live at 105 St. Atcourt.
Thank you.
I was not planning to speak. I just came to support our community and just to find out what was going on. I'd like to thank the Herndon's for their property that they've done for Turner Creek. We're all aware, I'm very grateful for them. I'm talking, what I'd like to speak about is being a crossguard. I have been a volunteer crossguard at Turner Creek Road. My concerns are how to get across the other end as well. I'm a stay-at-home mom. I'm called several times a day, can you watch my kid? Can you pick up my kid? Parents are in fear of their kids crossing the street. I am too. We had to make up our own crossguard signs. I actually had a time where somebody didn't show up for the position, and I walked out, said like this to stop so I can cross kids, and as somebody from a neighboring development who comes from our school yelled at me, "Where's your sign? Get out of the road." I wanted to go after the person, but I had kids, and I was calm, which I'm not right now. But it puts fear into me. People are rushing. Harmony is a community that goes through Turner Creek, and we're also neighbors who watch after each other. We have a lot of communities that come into our development for drop-off. We're year-round. We also have magnet school pickups, we have middle school pickups, we have high school pickups, we have Apex, we have people all over coming through. We cannot afford that many more residents to come through this community. We have no concerns about them building. We understand growth. We're here because of it, and we appreciate it. We live here because of the Herndon's and because we've had growth. But the density is very important. And as far as the traffic, I have not looked at the reports. All I can tell you is that rush hour is starting at 8:30, 3 o'clock. Those kids get out at 3:45, they start lining up at 3 o'clock. When we were building our home and we rented, I literally had to stay in, on Turner Creek Road, because they couldn't even turn them that fast in. There was a backup to try to get in. My concern is there are going to be more, and we do appreciate your time, like we said. We really do. We don't want there not to be any growth. We understand that. We're here because of it, and we love being here. So we appreciate your time and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jim Salembeer, 104 Berrybrook Court, from the Chesney-Glen subdivision. So based on the changes that I see, obviously, this is a rezoning. And what I see so far is the changes, there was a reduction from 110 to 94, and there was two-car garage added. That's the only thing that I really saw that was major from what you guys voted on last time. So what I'm thinking is, initially, when I started this in August, meeting with the developer and stuff, and I saw drawings from him, and the original drawings, you know, I know they're drawings and just proposals from the developer, but when I see this stuff, I see 102 in one drawing. Latest drawing I saw was 104. So I was thinking, well, I don't think he could have probably even potentially made 110. And so, to me, in my eyes, I see possibly he dropped maybe 10 homes total on this whole thing. So from the density standpoint, I still like to point out that, basically, the surroundings, think about, everybody's seen it numerous times, the surrounding is low-density, three homes per acre on an average, all the subdivisions, Chesney-Glen, Harmony, Brookstone across the way. So, you know, to me, I think, you know, and speaking for other members of Chesney-Glen, density is a consideration here, and I hope you consider that dropping at maybe 10 or 15 homes isn't, I don't see how it could change your vote from the last vote. The other thing I want to bring up is access number two. I pull out on 55, you know, and have to make a left because I'm on the Chesney-Glen side. So there's the intersection that is close to access number two, which is Catlin Road and Park on this green lane. And I'll tell you, there's many times, it doesn't matter if it's a weekend, a workweek, day or night, you know, you're going to come out and you got to figure out how to get out and make, and get in through the gap of cars. So what will happen a lot is people will pull out and just go down the center lane. You got somebody trying to pull into West Park, and there's been very close, you know, head-on collisions. And then there's another concern where people pull out from West Park going towards Apex, and I'm trying to make a turn into Catlin, and then there's people that are driving down the center lane just to find that gap into where the cars are coming in. And there's been numerous close accidents. And so where this access number two is, my concern is there's going to be cars coming out pulling left that way, cars coming out of the intersection of West Park, and also that's just going to increase the concern of accidents around there. There's also a slope right there at Turner Creek Road to where my intersection is, and that's a pretty good hill, and people are clipping at 60 miles an hour there. So you got to think about people coming out. A lot of young kids, inexperienced drivers, they're going to pull out and get clipped, T-boned, and I can see, you know, more fatalities in this area here. It's a dangerous area to pull out. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cassandra Herndon. I am the granddaughter, or the great-granddaughter of the original landowners and the niece of Leon and Herndon and Kathleen Burt-Herndon-Lee. I was at the meeting in September, first experience of attending a public meeting, and I heard all the comments from the concerned citizens in the various subdivisions and well-wanted concerns as homeowners and parents of children attending Turner Creek Elementary and the concerns of the growth in the area. But what I wanted to touch on is the traffic flow on Turner's Creek that is of concern. I recently retired from the state of North Carolina, leaving my home, which is located at the corner of Highway 55 and Louis Drive, which is the homehouse, and there is a signal light at that intersection. And I personally think, as a person who commute to Raleigh each morning, and I'm home when the school opens and all the buses and the parents' drop-offs take place in the morning, I believe that the traffic has managed pretty well, considering there are no lead-green type lighting or any signal, left-turn signal or right-turn signal for traffic to lead onto 55. People have been quite respectful of letting someone else go, the buses and the carpoolers at that intersection. So I'm coming forth to say the concerns there at 55 and Turner's Creek with the small amount of backup can be something alleviated, I do believe, with, I guess, Department of Transportation or whomever, to change that signal pattern, to add, it's already there, it's just not in operation. I believe the light is already set up to do a lead-left or a right-turn, which maybe will help with some of the concerns of that traffic backup or the traffic flowing, because I've not witnessed any accidents during the heaviest rush hour in the morning. Now, and I'm not home in the evenings, so I don't know what the traffic flow is like most evenings. The evenings I've been there, having to be off from work, it has not been a phenomenal amount of traffic that it doesn't flow. It carries on for about, I'd say, 15, 20 minutes, the most, if even that much, of letting out of school in the morning. They get in there, they get out, they go on, and just by the grace of God, everything has been flowing well, to my concern. So I just think if we work together with DOT or whomever controls the signal light and the traffic flow, that could help a lot with some of the concerns that the parents are having here today. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you will support the growth, the continued growth in that community.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak to us? Anyone at all? Seeing no one coming to the podium, I'm going to close this public hearing and open this case up for discussion from the board. Questions?
I have a couple. The first, the staff report references alternative building styles of townhomes and patio homes, I believe. Would single-family detached be another alternative that could be done in a medium-density residential land use?
The way that our ordinance is set up within the zoning districts, we do have different residential types, townhome and single-family, or, well, detached residential being one type. For a townhome is considered a type of single-family. For a detached, single-family home is listed as a separate dwelling type.
But could that type also be done in this land use designation with the appropriate zoning?
Let me...
Do you know offhand?
Let me go back to this. The types of units that are specifically listed here are the duplex units, patio homes and townhomes. A detached, a detached, single-family unit as a unit type would be, in order for that used to be allowed, that would be an additional condition that the applicant would need to offer, because it's not included in the specific list. And then we would need to take a look at that and look at the traffic generation for that use compared to the other residential uses.
I was just trying to remind myself if that is a permitted type in this land use designation, not even this particular zoning.
Yes.
It would be. And the second question, we had a couple, during the public hearing, it was stated more than once that the surrounding neighborhoods are approximately 3.5 dwelling units per acre. Do you believe that is about, approximately correct?
It varies. There's, with different sections in the neighborhood, it's roughly three. There's some areas where it goes up to about four, three and a half to four, just based on some of the different sections. And if I can clarify, I just now, in responding to your previous question, the base zoning for this is residential multifamily.
Right, for this particular zoning.
So in the residential multifamily district, I'm sorry, I missed your, the thought, that the single-family is not an allowed use.
I was after the land use designation, not this zoning.
Okay.
The MDR, so I got it both ways. Yeah, thank you very much.
But in MDR, as far as looking at the comprehensive plan and not the zoning, in MDR, goes from three to eight dwelling units per acre.
That's correct.
And so, and it doesn't refer to the particular type of building, just the density. So a three-dwelling unit per acre detached home, and I know some neighborhoods are four dwelling units per acre detached, would fit within the MDR designation on the comprehensive plan.
Right. The comprehensive plan designation, as you said, allows three to eight units per acre. It doesn't specify the type. So if that was a single-family type of development or a different zoning district that was geared towards single-family development, could be consistent with the MDR designation as long as it met that density criteria.
Ms. Spess, I'm sorry.
In regards to traffic, on 55, the property, the proposed property, the, a left turnout of 55 would be an issue, but there is also a proposed exit entrance onto Turner Creek, which would allow them access to 55 with a light. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I just want some clarification. I just want to make sure, the current land use designation is medium-density residential, which allows, which will allow, single-family homes, detached.
The plan, the land use plan designation is, allows a density of three to eight units per acre, and if there were, a zoning district could be requested consistent with that designation that could allow single-family homes, as long as the density was at least three units per acre.
And the current zoning districts are R40, Watershed, 5.42 acres, and Highway District... And the current zoning districts are R-40, Watershed, 5.42 acres, and Highway District, 10.36 acres. Can you explain to me what does Highway District would, what are the constraints?
Both of those districts are Wake County zoning districts, this property is currently in Wake County. We don't have exact districts for, we don't have a Highway District that's exactly the same as their Highway District. But there are a variety of uses allowed within that designation that are institutional, commercial in nature. But that would be, if it was developed under Wake County, those are the uses that it would be limited to with, within Wake County, and it would be developed under whatever dimensional standards and other standards that Wake County has. One big difference is that if it were developed under Wake County, it would be with whatever could be developed in those categories with using well and septic tank as opposed to public services.
Since I have you, my one question would be, if we were to go with 3.5 units per acre, that would bring to about 54 units of homes, townhomes or whatever kind of homes, versus 94 homes proposed. What would be the traffic impact of additional 40 homes? Do you think that's a major cause of traffic intensity?
I can't answer that. I don't know if our transportation engineering staff can answer that. In terms of 2.5 units?
3.5. 3.5 brings to about 54 units for 16 acres. And the applicant is proposing 94 units, so that's about 40 units more. And I was just wondering, what's the impact of additional 40 units in terms of the traffic or the school?
I think if, to look at that big of a change, I assume we would need to take another look at the traffic generation numbers based on that different, that different scenario and that big of a change in the number of units. I don't know if Julie has anything to add to that.
That's an hypothetical scenario. I know it probably is very difficult to make a projection on the fly at this time.
My name is Julie Green. I'm a town traffic engineer. So I'm assuming your question is, the traffic study looked at 68, single-family, single-family homes. So if you're asking if we could have about 50, single-family homes, 53 approximately?
Well, the proposal, you looked at, your study looked at 68?
We, so basically, what we do when we do a traffic study is we look at the different scenarios, and we take the scenario that creates the most traffic. So 68, single-family patio homes would generate more traffic than the 94 townhomes. Because we know that generally, you know, patio homes would have more people dwelling in them, and the National Institute of Transportation Engineers has done studies, and that's what our traffic is based on when we make these assumptions. So when we did the traffic study, we looked at the 68, single-family homes because that generated more traffic than the 90, you know, 110 townhomes. So if we drop that to approximately, you know, 53, single-family homes, you know, I would presume about, you know, a 10%, you know, 12% decrease in traffic, you know, as you would assume, just a general, you know, direct proportion of traffic in that manner in looking at the traffic study and the results that would, you know, come with that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of traffic again? Thank you.
So if I'm understanding this, 68 homes at 4.3 units per acre generates more than 94, six units per acre, according to the model?
So basically, you know, we actually, we actually just have the applicant give us the total numbers. You know, we, you know, there's lots of buffers and things that function into it. So as a traffic engineer, we're really looking at, you know, the two scenarios, are we looking at, at the time when we, you know, looked at the traffic study, it was 110 townhomes versus 68, single-family homes. And we want to be conservative, so we went with the 68, single-family homes that generally generates more traffic than the townhomes.
Sure. But at 4.3 units per acre, they generate more than the higher townhome scenario. So I guess what I'm looking at is, even if this developer dropped the density down, which is what sounds like all the applicants are asking for, they're still within traffic issues. So I guess it's sounding to me like, density doesn't really correlate to higher traffic standards, higher traffic counts. Correct? Fair statement?
Well, I think that, I think we're looking at, you know, two different things here because I think that when they look at the densities, you know, we actually ask them to cap their numbers, and that's what they chose to do. So obviously, their proposal, you know, what you're implying is less than what, you know, the density requirements are. So we're really using the caps that are presented to us to analyze traffic. We're not getting into the densities necessarily of, of the, you know, transportation analyses.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Quinn, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I understand that the traffic that originates from an area that originates and goes back for a townhome is, according to the manual, less than for a detached home?
Yes. So typically, you know, when we look at our traffic studies, we look at the two peak hours, which generally are, you know, the AM and the PM peak hour. When you look at a, single-family home, we, the national guidelines dictate that there's about 10 trips per day, and a trip is defined as, you know, leaving the home and going to your, you know, origin, and then returning would be two trips. So national guidelines dictate that, single-family homes generate about 10 trips per day, and that townhomes would generate approximately six trips per day. And obviously, that's correlated down to the peak hour because, you know, peak hour is about 10% in general of, you know, a 24-hour volume generated by these land uses.
Okay. I do have some more questions specifically about the traffic analysis report.
Sure.
I noticed that at the Turner Creek Road and proposed site access, southbound left and right turn is listed as an E level of service.
Yes.
And I believe that is failing.
That would be considered, you know, failing, however, it's not uncommon at an unsignalized intersection for that level of service to occur.
But under our old land development ordinance, we would not be allowed, as I understand it, we would not have then been allowed to rezone the property if it would produce a failing level of service.
We actually, our old adequate public facilities speak specifically to signalized intersections and offering mitigations at those intersections. Commonly, there have been instances where unsignalized access points have been failing and no mitigations are considered because obviously, we can't signalize every unsignalized intersection and make it work due to it not meeting the requirements for signalization and spacing.
My biggest concern is the left turn coming out of access point two, the unsignalized that goes directly onto 55. And I'm not so much concerned with the fact that that's a level of service E, because it's relatively few cars that would be affected and would have to wait for that amount of time. What I'm concerned about is the left turn, and a number of people have mentioned that, and we've gotten some email concerning that, making a left turn onto 55, having to wait for a gap. And I understand no gap analysis has been done on this, unless it's been done recently.
We have not done a gap analysis at this location.
But as, as cars are waiting, people tend to get impatient. And while you're sitting there waiting to make that gap, a gap acceptance decision, the amount of a gap keeps dropping of what you would require, and pretty soon you turn left when you shouldn't have, particularly inexperienced driver, but even inexperienced when the same thing happens. And I know that there have been several accidents, and I've myself, since I drive on that road fairly frequently on 55, have experienced some pretty close calls. Now, it states in the traffic analysis report that the restricting access to right-in, right-out operation, so that you would not have that left turn onto 55, or left turn off of 55, that had been considered. Is there a reason that was rejected?
Well, typically, one of the things you want to look at when you look at access to a site is that, what happens when you restrict that access onto NC-55? And what would happen then would be that all traffic would be coming off of Turner Creek Road. And as you are aware, in the report, it states that that may not be an issue necessarily in the PM because the PM peak on the access onto Turner Creek is showing to be acceptable. However, you know, the morning peak is showing to be a level of service of E as well. So lots of times, dictating access is really balancing a lot of pros and cons of all of these, you know, different mechanisms at place. And therefore, I think that the DOT, looking at the spacing and also looking at the history of accidents along the corridor, felt that they would allow the access at this time. However, you know, if there were issues in the future, they would consider, you know, any access, obviously, along NC-55 could be considered to be a right-in, right-out.
Now, the comprehensive transportation plan, I believe, mentions the possibility that there would be a median on 55?
Yes.
And would there be a cut-through at that point? Or would it be forced to go to right-in, right-out?
Well, I think at the time that a median is placed, they will look at a lot of the access points along NC-55, and obviously, they will need to evaluate at that time, you know, which access points would be allowed to possibly be left open, or possibly, they may put in a, you know, left-in provision along the median at some locations, as you've seen when DOTs come in and put in medians. However, a lot of that's based on volume and future analyses that, you know, we would probably have to look at at the time that it occurs to determine which locations would be left open and which locations might be restricted to a left-in and which locations may be closed.
Now, in the traffic analysis, well, I noticed first that there, it's shown that there'll be a connection between this property, the Herndon-Bert property, and the Harmony subdivision. Was that taken into consideration in the traffic analysis report?
No, it was not because we are just analyzing the access points and the trips generated at that time. If the connection is not going to be a part of, you know, the immediate plan, then we did, did not distribute trips.
So when that, that access between the two subdivisions is in place, that would provide for people in Harmony who did not want to cut down to Turner Creek and go and then make a left turn at a signal, they could cut through and make a left turn onto 55 if they were intending to go north?
Yes, they could.
And that is in addition to what's in the traffic study?
Well, I would expect that trips would distribute a little differently depending on, obviously, the volumes on NC-55 and the times at which they would like to make that movement. So I would assume that there would be some traffic using that connection, and that would give some relief to the signalized intersection at Turner Creek and NC-55.
Okay. Thank you.
You mentioned that the 10 trips per day for a single-family, six for?
Approximately.
For these type of units, townhouse-type units. Would we expect to see more traffic or less traffic if this were built out under the current zoning, being commercial, retail, and industrial?
Generally, commercial and retail would generate more trips than residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
Let's just hypothetically say that the Berts had no attachment, Herdons and the Berts had no attachment to this land whatsoever. And they had actually sold the property that they now occupy, along with the other property, to a developer that was going to put in, single-family homes in here, similar to the two communities to the west and to the north. The way I look at this, it's, from what I'm hearing you say and from what I'm reading in the staff report, it would seem to me that that would have been more of a traffic problem than what we are addressing today.
Well, I think that we could obviously look at the volumes that would, you know, come forward. However, you know, we just need to be mindful that, as we stated, that, you know, single-family homes do generate more traffic than townhomes, if you look at the national guidelines, and that would be the IT trip generation manual.
So the answer is yes.
So depending on the numbers, I can't really say what the overall, you know, if they had, you know, put, combined the parcels, I'm not sure what numbers we would be looking at, but if I had a, you know, a concept, I could relay that to you appropriately.
Ma'am, what I'm hearing is you're saying typically around six for townhomes?
Mm-hmm.
10 for single-family homes?
Yes, and that's daily 24-hour trips.
Right. So if, if all of this property, if they had let go of their personal land that they now occupy and sold the entire piece for, single-family development, you'd have had an additional four?
Four acres, yes.
If I may just clarify, according to the data provided in the report, the 68, single-family homes, they generate 57 AM peak hour trips and 74 PM peak hour trips. And 110 townhomes generate 56 AM peak hour trips and 65 PM peak hour trips. So what it is saying is the, single-family or patio homes generate much more traffic, or as much traffic as 110 townhomes, according to the data provided in the report.
Yes.
And I'm kind of trying to understand, why would the, maybe these are the national guidelines, but why would a, single-family home generate more, more trips rather than a townhome?
Well, I, I think when you look at this in the perspective of, you know, a, single-family home could possibly have more applicant or more occupants, you know, there could be two people, you know, wage earners, there could be multiple children and activities, and I think it's just a, a direct correlation of the number of occupants.
Mr. Warner, you've been patient.
In your original calculation, and first of all, let me go back to what the applicant testified to earlier. He said that one of the concessions was to add a two-car garage, and he also implied that as, in doing that, the unit would be larger. And did your calculation take into consideration that even though it's 94 townhomes, but they're going to be larger, presumably, higher occupation or occupancy? Did you consider that in terms of the chip, trip generation?
So actually, the national guidelines, they do an average of, you know, many different types of townhome developments, and that's how they come up with their, you know, their guidelines. We don't actually have any understanding of whether there's two-car garages associated with those townhomes or, or one-car garages and necessarily square footage. It's basically just national averages and hundreds of observations and counts generated off of those observations, and that's how the rates are determined nationally that we use.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I'd like to ask a quick one, and this is going to require a little bit of going back and giving us some historical perspective. It used to be that we spent a lot of time worrying about schools, and, and because of some... And, and because of some things that evolved, policy things that have evolved, we stopped considering school capacity or school capacity impacts. Could somebody refresh us on that history and help us remember why it is we don't really focus on the school capacity issues anymore? Mr. Olm has getting up, I was hoping he would.
This issue of school capacity was addressed by an, similar to the transportation discussion you're having, with adequacy calculations done for roadways. The town had an ordinance that looked at school adequacy and, I have to go back in my own memory in terms of history and timing. Suffice it to say, that ordinance was rescinded and removed some years ago now. And so what you get in your staff reports for rezonings in particular, that ordinance only applied to site and subdivision plans anyway, it didn't apply at the rezoning stage, partly because of what you're hearing even with the trip generation. You're rezoning property, sort of a gross amount of acreage, potential number of units, you're trying to make these estimations of how many school-age kids or how many units or how many bedrooms, and there's so many variables, that that ordinance only applied at the site and subdivision stage. So it didn't, didn't apply at the rezoning stage. But what you get in your staff report for rezoning is just sort of general information about school kid generation information that you can use to be able to factor that in, in your decision-making process on a rezoning. But that ordinance was deleted and removed through a formal process of public hearing and planning board review and council action. So that's why that's not a regulatory aspect of the process that we have in place today.
Yeah, I ask that because several of the speakers tonight refer to impact on the school. And I recall that ordinance discussion.
And your staff report has estimated and our staff works applying, you know, and you've got caveat after assumption after caveat in there about trip generation. And the report shows you, and I'm not sure if that was generated even at the time when it was originally 120 units or if it really, you know, was adjusted as it came through the process, but you saw, you see a range at each grade, at each school level of potential number of students. But there's so many factors in terms of unit size or number of bedrooms, et cetera, that it's just there as a reference.
And I seem to recall, one of the reasons we backed away from that was it's very difficult to predict what Wake County schools is going to do. And we really can't put an expectation on them. We don't know whether there's another school going down the block or, we might have a hint.
And all of that was a consideration when the ordinance was looked at. So never mind the development type and the student generation, it's all those factors. Then you have to couple it with sort of not really a fixed piece of, I mean, schools change, modular units get added, students don't go to that school anymore or can select a different school. So there were just so many variables. It was the dog chasing its tail, trying to figure out how would we ever really, you know, apply those kinds of things.
That was my, my recollection, but I appreciate you confirming it.
Sure.
I bring this point up because we always kind of worry about impact on schools. But we found, because of this history, that we, we just simply can't make zoning decisions based upon information that we don't have available to us from the schools in terms of their plans.
If I can just make one addition to those comments in terms of the school information that you have in the staff report. You may not have noticed this change, but some time ago, we did have individual schools listed with the school districts or the schools that went with the particular area. We no longer do that because there is so much change with the, with the school assignment. So it's really impossible to predict exactly what school, where students will go to. The other thing, when you, when you look at the numbers for the school generation, we, we look at that and based on the variations of this generation of schoolchildren by townhome units, single-family units, patio home units, there's a different generation rate that Wake County gives us every year based on these types. So the, that range of numbers that you see is based on the multipliers that we get from Wake County. And then we look at the, the scenario that would yield the least number of students and the scenario that yields the highest number of students, just based on that basic information. So the, the real number would be some, somewhere within that range that's going to be just completely dependent on the specific development and, you know, within the range of what's allowed within the zoning conditions that are proposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
Yes, please.
Can you elaborate on the public safety issue? We had heard some citizens talking about public safety. And I assume public safety would mean access to the police and fire and so forth, but I think maybe they might be considering children's safety. And in that case, would you see any difference in children's safety with the current zoning versus the proposed zoning? Would that be impacted?
I think one of the issues, just to give some perspective, there, based on the comments, there seems to be an existing issue, safety issue that's, that's perceived because of the sidewalk situations. I understand at the sidewalk that comes up Turner Creek to the school, then there's several crossings of driveways and there's not a direct sidewalk from the public sidewalk through the school property to the entrance to the school without having to cross some of these driveways. And that is, I mean, that is something that is more of an onsite issue related to the school and the design of the school. The applicant, there was, the applicant did, as I understand, talk to the school district with trying to help facilitate resolving this problem and actually approached us and to see if there could be a zoning condition. And that was actually one that the staff basically rejected, any conditions that we would have no way to enforce or implement. If it, you know, any condition, any zoning condition that would require off-site sidewalk improvements on another property, that we would have no control over them being able to meet that, was not an appropriate zoning condition to put onto the property, that it's a different, it's a, it's a different issue that is an existing concern related to the configuration of the sidewalk in the school.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? In that case, do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board forward case number 12REZ20 to the town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans and is reasonable in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Let me defend my change of vote here because I voted against this the last time. Everything that I see and what I was trying to pry out of our traffic department was that if this had have been just all residential housing, this problem would be worse than if it's going to be townhomes. And I don't think I'm erroneous in my conclusion on that. The school issue is a school issue. It's not really a rezoning issue. It's a safety issue. It has something to do with the Wake County school system. The developer has extended a willingness to try to ameliorate the problem. But one of the things that I've lived my life by is whose problem is this? And it really isn't the city of Cary's problem, it's Wake County school system's problem. The traffic issue, 55 is 55. It is what it is. I live off of Walnut, right at the US-1 interchange. And I know what it's like to make a left-hand turn in incoming traffic. Maybe it's not quite doing 70 miles an hour as it might be on 55, but I've seen a lot of people doing 60 miles an hour on Walnut. And it's a much shorter thoroughfare between Maynard and US-1. So when I look at this, I just sort of end up saying that this is a transition, it's medium density. I don't think it could be any better if it had have been single-family homes. I think it would have exacerbated a problem that you already have to deal with. So that's why I'm changing my vote and that's why I'm going to propose that we forward this to town council.
Other comments? Mr. Warner?
Last time I voted against the proposal, and I did based on two reasons, density and character of the neighborhood. The developer has come back and reduced the density. There's never going to be an absolute situation where all parties are going to be happy. But when you go out and you look at in terms of the character of the neighborhood, when you look at Harmony, you have a mix of masonry and siding, primarily siding on the sides of the house. You have two-car garages, for the, for the most part, some three-car garages in Harmony. And I see that the developer has come back with a proposed change that would put the townhouses more in line with the character of what I was seeing in Harmony. In terms of the buffer, when you go out and you look from Harmony over to the, the land to be developed, I can't imagine anything that would disturb that buffer. It is completely opaque and so therefore, I don't see the, I do not see the buffer as being an issue. Number three, I believe that there are some, the neighbors have expressed, I think, some legitimate concerns about safety. And like Mr. Rogers, I believe that a lot of those issues have to do with the school and, and thus, an issue that Wake County, and for those reasons, I'm going to vote to approve the proposal.
Okay, other comments?
I supported this rezoning the first time. And listening to, and I believe that in my opinion, D.R. Horton has clearly listened to and addressed a number of the concerns of the surrounding homeowners and, and even members of the public planning zoning board. Traffic may be an issue on 55, it's always an issue. But it also has to be the responsibility of, of the driver to ascertain whether they can make a left-hand turn in or out of any property on 55 or any road for that matter. So for that reason, I will get, once again, support the proposed rezoning.
Other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
I really do appreciate the reduction in, in density. It is still denser than the neighborhood, which is townhomes that I live in. So townhomes can be even less dense than that. The two-car garage will be in some ways an improvement as far as making the units more valuable. But also, while it's not reflected in the IT manual, which is an average, it does, from what I have personally seen, tend to increase the amount of traffic that would be generated from a townhome versus a single-car garage, simply because it's, the unit would be more attractive to a married couple with children and who is still working as opposed to retirement, retired. So I think that's sort of a mixed blessing as far as the two-car garage, although personally I do prefer them. My biggest concern, I do share the concerns that have been expressed about traffic issues around the school and with the intersection there and with the school, schoolchildren. I think about the only solution to that would be to have very low density, which is, would mean a change in the comprehensive plan. But I think that would be the only solution to that safety problem and the overloading of the schools and, and other problems. The particular problem I have is with the entrance number two onto 55, particularly the left-hand turn aspects. Now, we can certainly say that 55 is 55 and will be that way, that it is responsibility of the driver not to turn when he shouldn't. However, that doesn't do you any good if you're traveling south on 55 and somebody pulls out in front of you. The fact that it is his responsibility doesn't help you. I have personally experienced, since our first hearing on this, in the last couple of months, at least two times when I've had to hit the brake on 55 with people pulling out. I don't know if it resulted from an accident, but I do know at least one time I was tied up for several minutes while traffic was stopped and there were flashing lights up ahead, so I assume it was probably due to an accident. That didn't make the paper or the news or anything like that, but certainly caused a lot of people a lot of inconvenience. So the, the primary concern is, I'm concerned with the right turns, I'm particularly concerned with the left turns and the additional danger that that imposes on drivers on 55 who do not even necessarily live anywhere near this property, but who are going down 55 and exposed to more danger. So for that reason, I'm going to vote, as I did before, against rezoning.
Other comments?
Well, I'll say that I voted against this when it came before us earlier and stated, I think, pretty clearly, my primary concern was density. The density has been reduced and I'm really torn because I don't know if that, you know, if that's the right number. It is still toward the high end of three to eight units per acre. It is still significantly higher density than the surrounding, surrounding neighborhoods. And I really am, am torn on this. And generally, when I am torn and can see both sides, and I think the applicant has responded by reducing the density as well as the other conditions that were offered, with the very clear message we heard from the neighborhoods, I, I'm going to tend to favor and side with the citizens we heard from. I think they expressed valid and sincere concerns. Having said that, I will also, I would caution the neighbors that this is not by any means the worst thing that could happen there. The property owner certainly has a right to develop their property. The underlying land use plan, the comprehensive plan says three to eight dwelling units per acre. The rezoning then sort of helps determine what that number should be. We heard a lot of things about traffic. This is not the worst thing that could happen in terms of traffic. Traffic's going to increase when it's going to develop. It's inevitably going to develop and they have a right to develop it under certain criteria. And again, I'm on the verge of supporting this, but based on what I heard and based on what I think, the density is still primarily out of character as a transition from the surrounding neighborhoods, I'm going to oppose this. But again, I do think the applicant has responded and just would tell the neighbors, you know, something's going to happen there at some point.
Other comments?
Well, I'm going to weigh in just because I imagine this whole process sounds pretty confusing to the folks that came to talk to us tonight. The, these traffic analysis assumptions that we use, sometimes the assumption data just doesn't seem logical. And I've, I started off in this process five years ago, I guess, five or six, and I didn't trust this traffic data. And I've found over time that, you know, these traffic engineers doing national studies know more than I do. And I've found that, in fact, they're a little bit smarter than I am in figuring out traffic. For that reason, I tend to trust the experts, even when it is counterintuitive. I'm troubled by the safety concerns around the school. And I agree with the other board members that, you know, frankly, Wake County schools got to address this problem. You know, they create it, they should address it. Am I entirely confident they're Am I entirely confident they're going to do a good job of that? Well, I'll be honest with you, not entirely confident. Will this project, if built, make it worse? Probably a little bit, but I think it's going to get worse anyway. It's a problem that needs to be addressed. And if I were a parent in this subdivision, I'd be talking to my school board members, representatives. I'd be, I'd be beating on them, you know, fix this problem no matter what happens with this property. Something's going to happen here. I expect that it is going to be residential and it's going to be in this density range. Would I have liked to see a lower-density U-Bet? I would like to have seen in the mid-range of medium-density residential. But, you know, frankly, I can understand why a single-family maybe doesn't make sense here. Would you want to have a home right on 55 with the noise that that creates? You know, there's a reason why we transition densities from lower densities in, in residential developments toward higher densities as we get near major arterials. And so I like the fact that we're actually proposing a transition to a higher density closer to Highway 55 because I think, I'm not sure I would want to buy a single-family home on 55. So for those reasons, I'm torn on this thing, but I'm, I'm leaning now, I actually went through the whole evening kind of swinging back and forth. And I think, given what I heard from the experts, I'm probably going to have to support this proposal as well. Does anyone else have? Mr. Nath, you look like you have some.
I would make my comment, actually. I've been torn in both, in between one and the other leg, Mr. Miller. I would have preferred to have a lower density, like three units per acre would have been better. But the comprehensive plan allows medium density and that allows between three to eight, so. But I think that's a little bit out of character of having the 6.9 unit per acre in the neighborhood. And for all the reasons stated by Mr. Miller, I would tend to oppose the resolution.
Other comments? In that case, I'm going to call this motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's, let's get some hands here. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed?
No.
That's three. That motion passes six to three. And now we're going to move on to the next case on our agenda, which is a case without a public hearing, that is 13 REZ 01, the Ellis property at Pitterd Sears Road. Ms. Crennan?
Can I move that we have a short recess?
We have a motion for short recess. Any concerns?
Second.
Second? Okay, let's, let's take a, can we be back by a quarter of the hour?
Thirty minutes.
Please. You've got four minutes.
Thank you.